We will now call the meeting of the Fayette County School Corporation Board of School Prestige Business Meeting to order. We are here at the Administration Building. It is Tuesday, January 16th, 2018, and it is 6:30 PM. And let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I would like to begin by seeking a motion to approve the agenda as submitted and amended.
I so move.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Chris. All those in favors, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we will now move on to the election of school board officers. This can be done as an entire slate or office by office. It is your pleasure. So I will look for the first motion for nominations.
I'd like to make a motion.
Nominations, thank you.
We keep our same slate of officers. Thought we had a good year, and I like what everybody's doing. It's just my opinion, so I'll move that we keep that same slate.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Andy, second thing. Okay. Any other discussion or nominations?
Just point of order, does that include the reslating of previous officers? Does that include the?
Finance?
Board of Finance?
No, this is a separate meeting.
That's separate.
Any other nominations or discussion? Okay, seeing none, we can close the nominations. Is that... We have to make a motion to close the nominations.
I so move.
Thank you, Anna, second.
Second.
Thank you, Mark. The motion to close nominations has no happened. Now we will take a vote. All those in favor of the current slate going forward for the positions of President, Vice President, Secretary, and Assistant Secretary, please raise your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and the new officers are in place. And now, I'd like a motion to adjourn this first meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lori, a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Chris. And the meeting is now adjourned. I don't have to hold on that right.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Board of Finance. Our first order of business is to elect a president and secretary. I will take a motion for to nominate candidates for these positions.
I would make a motion for Warren to be the president. Are we doing these separately or is it a slate?
It's a slate, it doesn't matter.
And Andy to be secretary.
I will.
I can't.
You can say it, secretary.
Yes, Andy.
Are there... Oh, well, she has, yes.
Are there any other nominations?
Are there any other nominations? It's been moved and seconded. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I ask for motion for nominations to be closed.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Chris, seconds, okay. It's time to vote on the slate of officers. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Here, Warren.
Well, I think we get to close that.
Oh. Investment review, I think, isn't that James... James Baileywick.
Thank you. As a part of your packet this month and as required by state statute, in addition to your election of finance officers, we generally review the cash balances. You've been provided with a summary of the cash balances and investment balances at the end of each month. Just for summary, in December, our operating account had $6,135,611. Our main source investments held in trust were $15,545,000. We had one additional investment held outside of what's held in the main source trust of So our total funds would be $23,380,781. The next page details out our current investments, their interest rates, and their due dates. All of our investments now are held with Lake City Bank. We generally receive four to six CD... Four to six banks quoting on the CDs when UMBO goes out for investment quotes. But Lake City Bank has been the high bidder in terms of interest on each of those. So we have really worked in partnership with them to stagger the investment rollover dates when they mature, to try and get some depth in there. We are seeing on many of our investments almost double the interest rates we were getting a year ago. Not on all of them, but on some of them. We are... Our lowest interest rate is at 1.60%, and our highest at 1.95%. The investment policy was revisited in the end of this year, which allowed for those extended periods of time for investments to be two years. We also entered into our partnership with UMBO to manage those investments. I've really liked working with them. I think they've been very proactive on behalf of the school corporation. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. No actions needed.
Really quick on the second page, our main source operating account. We have a $6 million clearing account. Looks like it says we have a dollar in there. What's the clearing account for?
The clearing account used to be used, if you'll see back in June, it had like $600,000 in it on this. It would be used to hold the taxes withheld from employees.
Payable taxes.
Correct. That had not been debusited. Or their deductions for health insurance, and the employer contributions for health insurance were held in that account, and then we paid East Central, the trust, out of that. You have employees who do not work or get paid year-round, so they pay their health insurance contribution over 18 pays, and the board pays their contribution towards that health insurance over 18 pays. It was basically money from us to us, moving from this bank account to this bank account. And when Mrs. Jobe announced her retirement, that was a process that she was comfortable with, but it was just an exercise in moving money. And so now we don't do that. The clearing account is part of our operating account, and the... You will still see at the bottom of the fund report the amount that represents those monies held to pay those obligations, whether it be taxes or insurance, but it's now a part of the cash balance of the operating fund.
Okay.
We kept a dollar in there to keep that account open. At some point in time, we've had conversations with the buildings about being able to take credit cards.
Right.
For textbook rental or for athletic tickets. And my thinking is, instead of each school having to have their own banking arrangement for that, we might be able to work through that clearing account where we only have one account and one administration fee related to credit cards, and then we would disperse the monies back out to whether it be the high school athletics, but that's... Or Everton, or the high school for the textbook rental. So I thought we'd just keep it open for a while to see if that model might work. That's a work in progress, though. So...
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have a question?
Has UMBO worked out as well as it apparently has worked out as far as handling our investments is concerned?
Oh, yeah. Really like our partnership with them.
If we're getting 1.9%, that's amazing today. Yeah.
And you can second motion.
Oh, okay. I move that we adjourn the Finance Committee meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, you'll make it.
I'll second.
Isn't Warren the president now?
Well, you can carry out the...
Oh, I can carry out that. Okay. The motion to adjourn has been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign.
I now call the public meeting to order, and we are going to begin tonight with a presentation by Eastview Elementary, and we have Mr. Small here to introduce everybody.
Okay. Let's see, I'm gonna grab the mouse. We're not doing the pledge. No.
Okay.
We pledged already.
That makes sense.
We pledged already.
I am going to open the presentation here, and I will make... Let's start at the beginning of the presentation. I'll make introductions in just a second. Thank you for having us here. I was telling Janie and Cindy earlier, it is difficult as a teacher to stand in one place and present, but I will do my best not to wander. It really is a pleasure to be here. It is always a lot of fun and enjoyable to come and brag a little bit on Eastview and the great things happening in our school. I'll be using the screen a little bit tonight. Always improving is the challenge that I brought forth to my staff at the beginning of this year, with the idea being if all of us at Eastview continue to get a little bit better at what we do every day as a collective body, as a school, we will move forward. And that's really been the challenge that I have brought forth, and I'll say that I'm really proud of these folks here. My staff, they are just a tremendous group. They've taken that challenge to heart, and I see every day lots and lots of gains that they're making. And honestly, I'm humbled and blessed to be able to work with these folks every single day. I told someone just a little bit ago, when I see what you're doing in your classroom, it kind of makes me think back to my career, and I don't have quite as high an opinion of myself as I maybe once did. It's very humbling to work with these great folks every day. As we've moved forward over the last couple of years, we've really worked hard to develop a safe and collaborative school culture. And then over just this past year and a half, our real focus has been on defining our vision of instruction. And really, very simply what that is, it's just a common language that we have agreed upon. This is what we're doing every day in every classroom, and we're holding ourselves accountable to that vision throughout the process of trying to improve in all of those areas that really matter. It's also given us an opportunity for all of us, teachers, staff members, principal, to have very specific goals that we're working on and supporting one another with. It's really... It's been eye-opening to see how those little changes really do impact the whole. And I'll share a little bit of assessment data. Over the past four years, our IRE3 results have been above 90%. Some years, we've been as high as 97%. We've been an A school for the past four years. And I know all of you understand what that means as an A school and how that's calculated. Even though it's an ever-changing, moving target, it really is a lot... It is challenging to maintain those relatively high achievement rates while also assuring that every student is showing growth. And this past year, our I-Step results continued to exceed the state average. In Language Arts, we were at 8.7% above the state average, and in Math, we were at 14.6% above the state average. And we really are proud of this fact. It is representative of work that really begins in preschool and goes all the way through sixth grade, and all those little things that we do every day. This is one measure of that. We are proud of it. But as a good friend of mine says all of the time, she mentions it is not about the test, it is about the test takers. And I would venture to guess that any one of my staff members would tell you that. We don't spend tons of time focusing on this, but it is nice to bring it up every once in a while. What really matters are our kiddos. Back in November, I asked our students to write an essay about what's special about Eastview. So if you give me just three minutes here, I'll show a little video of a few of those students sharing their essays with you.
My name is Eric Bell. This is why I love Eastview. Eastview is special because we are safe, we have a caring nurse, we have the best principal ever. I love Eastview. I love our... And this school. I love our mascot, and I love our colors. Eastview is awesome. I love it. Thank goodness I'm in this school. Eastview is awesome.
My name is Jillian. It's Jillian. I love Eastview. I love Mr. Small and the teachers. It helps us learn. I get to see my friends. I get to see Mrs. Pinky and my classmates. Our teachers help us stay safe. I can make new friends. Eastview rocks.
My name is Emily Mostert, and I'm one of the essay winners, and this is why I think Eastview is special. Have you ever noticed the things that make our school, Eastview Elementary, special? Like when our secretary, Ms. Jones, lets us into the school building before school. She takes all the calls and even fills in for the nurse sometimes when she's not present or she's having her lunch break. Speaking of our nurse, Ms. Gross is a spectacular nurse. She helps take care of all the students and even adults, too. She basically cares for everyone in the whole building. Eastview has wonderful janitors, too. They take care of the school and keep it clean and tidy. Let's not forget the teachers of Eastview. They are the reason we excel. They continue to teach no matter how frustrating it can be at times. Teachers are the ones who keep the school organized and friendly. Lastly, there's our principal, Mr. Small. His job is very important. He takes calls and attends staff meetings. He is even... He even stands outside to greet us in the mornings and dismisses us and gives us high fives. He knows the names of all the students in the entire school. Those are some of the reasons why I think Eastview is special. Your student, Emily Mostert.
I like Eastview. The school is the best because I get to see my friends. I love my teacher, the school.
Hi, I'm Corinna. Eastview is special because there are amazing friends and families that dedicate their time and effort to Eastview. Eastview is a community dedicated to working hard, helping others, and making sure I am safe. Eastview is a school with its own heart and kids, its own staff, and its own teachers. Eastview is its own school. Eastview is great. I love Eastview. I'm so glad to be a part of Eastview. Thank you for being here. Goodbye.
Aren't they adorable? Pretty insightful, I would say. Great, great group of kiddos.
At this time, I would like to introduce our third-grade teachers, Alicia Bennett and Jessica Hufford, along with two of our sixth-grade students, Mason Cockerham and Tyler Caldwell. Come on up, guys, girls. They are going to share just a few minutes, going to share about our robotics club.
All right. Last year... Hi. Robo Thunder leaders. Last year, we started a robotics team at Eastview. It's part of the VEX IQ robotics program. We started it through a grant from the Tech Point Foundation for Youth in Indianapolis, and they were really wanting to grow it just outside of Indianapolis and spread it into the rest of the state. So we thought it sounded interesting, and we jumped in. We had one team last year, and we were able with a grant from the Fayette County Foundation to have two teams this year. So we doubled our squad size, which was nice, because only about eight kids... Eight kids is really the max that you would want to have on a team. But I mean, we are just the facilitators. They... It's their job every practice to come in and decide what they need to do, if they need to make changes to the robot, if they need to practice driving on the field and, you know, doing what they need to do. They designed the shirts, they picked the name, they do everything. We're just... We're just there to support them and assist, so...
I'm gonna interject, because I think this is great. They also had to negotiate the price of the T-shirts. They had to call around, and so anyway, I'm sorry. I thought that was awesome.
Yeah, yeah. Our PR team had to call around and talk to different businesses in the community and find out how much it would cost, and like they had to come up with a list of questions. So really, it's... I mean, obviously, I sat there and held the phone, but they... But it's all them. And then they had to go to Mr. Small and ask, how much can we spend here, or options, which one would you prefer we use? So Mason is going to tell you about some of the good things about being in the robotics club.
So being in robotics helps you learn teamwork, and you learn new friends, and you learn lifelong skills you can use later in life, and you get to learn how to be compatible with other people you don't really know that well. And yeah.
All right. Tyler's gonna tell you how the game works, and how... What exactly we do in robotics at our competitions.
Basically, during competitions, you have to use your robots as a team to get rings onto the posts or pull the bonus tray down. And it depends on how you put them on the rings, like, and color-code the things, to get how many points.
How much time do you have?
You have 30 seconds each for... There's partners on the teams, and each partner gets 30 seconds. And whoever wins... Whoever has the most points at the very end of the tournament wins.
And I'm gonna tell you a little bit about what our goals are. Like you said, last year, we had one team, and then this year, we were able to get another team, which has been wonderful. It's made it a little more interesting. We have the whole board now that we're able to just practice with one another, which helps for the competitions as well. But our goal would be to hopefully get some other schools on board with this, where we can have competitions here locally, even if it's after school, just, hey, we're gonna come and hang out and play the game and just have a friendly competition. Then eventually, maybe do a full-on competition on a Saturday where we have other schools, even from surrounding counties, come, and we host a competition. That way, more of our community can get involved and really see what it's all about. It's a really fun program. The kids love it. We've had a lot of fun. We're still learning as we go. I am definitely still learning as we go. But it's a lot of fun, and hopefully we'll grow this and get more people involved.
Anything else? All right.
I have a quick question. So what do you do? This sounds dumb, but like...
Uh-huh. Let me back up to this one. Yeah, go up and explain it, Mason.
All right. Teach.
Tyler? Explain this.
You have to remember we're old and technology...
This is the bonus tray, basically. And you have to pull down both sides of it to get all 20 points. I learned that the hard way. Yeah. And when you... Okay, these are the posts that you have to get the rings on. And if you get them color-coded, you get more points.
Is it 10?
I think so.
10.
So what moves those rings off of that thing on the end to the posts?
Oh, your robot.
How do you control your robot?
You have the remote.
Yeah.
And there's usually like... You use the robot to grab the rings, and when you grab the rings, you can lift them up and pull them down the poles.
There's like a claw, and there's certain buttons to lift the claw, lower it, open it, and close it, and...
So the skill is in how well... Which buttons you push to grab that ring and hope that that's the grab that's gonna hold it and then take it and put it onto that post?
Yes.
That's where it's...
But you also build your robots, too, right?
Yes.
And so they're... The way and how you balance things, I mean, there's all... There's a lot more to it with engineering and things, too, right?
And they're different kinds.
It shows up as a box of parts.
And are they different kinds? So those two next to each other on that end, those are two different types of robots?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. There was... There was a big one, and it had like a motor, and it put the ring on, and then it would go up and put it on, like a...
It's kind of a conveyor belt.
Like a conveyor belt.
Okay.
And then you put it on a stick, and then like lower it onto the pole.
Wow.
So there... I mean, the robot comes with an instruction manual, but that... I mean, that's just kind of the basic build. And then you look at... Like in our competition that we went to in December, they looked at what other teams had done and gathered ideas of how they could make theirs better. And so now we're kind of in the rebuild process for our next competition in February. So one of our robots right now, they made some minor changes to, and one is kind of been taken down to the bare bones, and they're figuring out what they want to do with it to make it better. So it's really...
That is cool.
It's cool.
So if you get them... If you get all the rings in a particular order, or if you get all the red ones or all of the green ones, then you get extra points?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we have one minute per round, so I mean, that's not...
Wow.
It's... So we're like in the picture, we have two of our team members and then two from another school's team, and they're working together, which is good, because at first, we kind of thought it was like battle bots, but it's not. It's you're... You're working together with the other team to get the highest score.
Yeah.
So they have to talk to... Talk to those other teams at first. At the beginning of the day of the competition, we get a schedule of who they're going to be with, so usually you see teams from other schools hunting each other down, like, all right, who's driving for your... For your team this time? We want to talk about what we want to do and kind of strategize and form a plan before they go out there and compete. So it's... It's really awesome. It really teaches them to communicate well with others, even with people they don't know, people they've never met before. But yeah, it's...
It's great.
It's sportsmanship. It's awesome.
How often do they have competitions?
We've... We're going to two this year. We went to one in December. That one was in Fairland. So we took a bus and got there... Yeah, it was about an hour away. And then we're going to one February 3rd over in Liberty.
This is why I wanted to grow it, so that we can do more, because a lot of the competitions are so far away, and it's just hard to get everyone there and scheduling, and so if we have more teams competing locally, then we can have more opportunities to do the competitions.
It's an all-day Saturday event. It's start... Registration starts at 8:00, and I think we left at about 4:00. So it's...
So how many teams were at the... Is that pretty big, too?
There were at least... I want to say 35 altogether.
I noticed you have officials in strides there. What kind of violations are they looking for? Are they...
They're... They're looking to make sure that each person is only driving for the right amount of time, that they're switching the remote in a certain amount of time, that they stop when time's... When time's up, and we... Tyler mentioned that he found out that you have to pull both sides of the bonus tray down, because we... One round, they pulled down one side, but not the other, but the bonus tray's still released. So we thought, sweet, 20 points. Like, that's the most points you can get on one task, but we didn't get the points because both sides weren't pulled down, even though they're released. So we learned... We learned that the hard way, but... But they... I mean, they know the rules of the game, and they are just... So they're just making sure that you follow the rules, and they're scoring, and once that minute's up, you don't touch the board until they have gotten your score. And the officials would ask them, do you agree with this score? Do you think we caught everything? So it's, like I said, it's a really... It's a good experience. I could go on about it for an hour.
What grade levels can participate?
It's anywhere, I believe, from first to sixth. We... Our team is just third to sixth, but there are some schools that have like second-grade teams, and I mean, it was... We made it a process to get in this year. It wasn't just a, hey, we think these people should do it. It was they had a call-out meeting, they had a form to fill out in return, and they had to explain why they would be the best person to be on the team, and...
That's great.
It's awesome. Like I said, I could talk about it for four hours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we would invite... Now, we, we would invite all of you to come to the competition on February third. It's just going to be over at Liberty, the middle school. It's in my most recent newsletter that I know I sent out. And really, you can kind of stop by. It's not like you have to commit your whole Saturday, swing in for twenty minutes and see what they're up to. I, I went last year, and it was, it was really cool. I ended up staying way longer than I planned, so... And as Jessica and Alicia said, our hope is more schools in the county will do this, and we'd love to sponsor a local competition. All right. I'll finish up with a quote that I share with my staff in one way or another frequently. In terms of education, we are not in the life and death business, but we are in the quality of life business. My staff and I, we take that very seriously, and we thank you for the opportunity that you give us to do every day. That's all I have.
Thank you, James.
Do we have something beyond the physical, the kids today?
Yeah, there were robotics in the other levels.
Crazy and...
And there's some, there's some dabbling in it, I believe, at the high school level.
That's what I thought. Because we used to, middle school used to have a, a really good robotics team when A.J. was there.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of who the...
Thank you for coming out.
She used to be the computer teacher.
Yeah.
It was Rena Coffman.
Rena Coffman.
Yeah, I remember what her name was.
Yeah, it's been a while, yeah.
Okay. Well, we will continue while Mr. Collins is in the hallway, giving our kids a thank you. Any patron comments on agenda items? Hearing none. We'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes from the regular business meeting of twelve, twelve, seventeen, the personnel report that includes retirements, resignations, leaves of absences, et cetera, the approval of the December 2017 claims, number four eight five two six to four eight seven nine four, the appointment of the corporation treasurer and deputy treasurer, the financial expenditure goals, the 2018 conflict of interest form that we approved. And now, I'm going to go through the acceptance of donations, and there's quite a few, and it's, this is just the humbling aspect of being on the board and learning about all these wonderful folks that get grants, or companies and individuals that donate. It's just blows me away all the time. A donation of $500 from Dot Foods to Fayette County School Corporation, a donation of $5,000 from Dr. Dana Reiman for CHS, a donation of $1,089.74 from the East Central Indiana Border Realtors for the CHS Corner Store, a donation of $500 from United Health Group for Conner'sville High School, a $5,000 donation from Brett and Brooke Adams for the CHS Swimming Scoreboard and Scoring System, a $500 donation from Conner'sville Middle School for the CHS Swimming Scoreboard and Scoring System, a grant of $699.99 from the Fayette County Foundation for the WCC Graphic Design Program, a grant of $22,435 from the American Welding Society Foundation Workforce Development Grant for Whitewater Career Center Welding Program, and a donation of $500 from Dot Foods for equipment and supplies at Whitewater Career Center. That's just amazing. We'll go ahead, and we'll seek a motion to approve the consent agenda, and I thought afterwards, we might have Mr. Duncan share with us a little bit about that scoreboard, because I think that's pretty exciting. So, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I like that motion.
Thank you, Warren. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ann. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Hey, Mr. Duncan, you share with us. We're excited to see what's going on.
Sure. I'm excited to be here.
Yeah.
And as Leslie knows, watching that old black scoreboard in the corner.
This is going to be cool. Watching that old black scoreboard in the corner do strange and wonderful things.
As you can see on the wall behind you, we are excited for the addition.
Oh, wow. Huge.
Compared to what we have had, unfortunately, we weren't able to put it perfectly because of the duct look above for the ventilation for the swimming pool, but we went through a couple of different processes of looking at scoreboards in different companies, and I found it kind of unique that in our area, about seven schools who had been in Colorado times have all of a sudden switched to Daktronics. I was like, "Okay, why are we all switching?" So, and if you've been to New Powell, to the swim section, they have Daktronic System, and they just updated last year. So, that's the company that we chose. It took them exactly one day to put that up on the wall. Unfortunately, it was three weeks later than we wanted, because they had a backorder part, so we were hoping to get it in before Christmas, before our invitational on the fifteenth and the sixteenth, but that wasn't quite the case. So, they put it up last week. We'll get a chance to see it in Houston this coming Saturday, if you want to come and watch. We've made, had a makeup swim meet with South Dearborn Saturday morning at eleven. But, it's exciting for us. I know some of the people who have donated has also worked our score system, and switching from the diving part of the, the meet to the swimming part, sometimes we blew a fuse in the old one, had to get the ten-foot ladder out and climb up and change the fuse, and clean the road, the corrosion on the electrodes at the top, and all the old notes up in there so that they can get it utilized. I know our kids are excited. There's also two pace clocks that will go on the side wall. I do not have a picture of those. If you've been in there, you know, we had the old round timer. Well, now, there are big eight-inch digital LED lights that'll go on the sides, so the kids, as they're swimming, one on each end, will be able to pace themselves a little bit better. So, those will be an upgrade and improvement for all of our kids. Hopefully, next for me is to, to improve the diving board, and I don't know how long the diving board's been there. We did have a break last year right before the invitational, so we had to make, it broke in the middle of the warm-up, so we had to sprint to Richmond to get it. The person who worked the signal had a spare piece happily in his garage, so we drove quickly to Richmond and back to get that repaired, so we could have our diving part of our invitational of last year. So, that'll be my next charge in the, in the pool, to probably get a new diving board. But, we're excited about having the new, the new scoreboard. Graciously, we got some super people who donated, not only people, but also companies. Those people donated a total of $16,000 towards the project, which was about thirty. Janie and I have talked with what's left in my CPF from last school year. We will get another about $4,000 of that covered, so we'll have about $20,000 of that covered. Then, myself and the swim team have raised money, and we'll pay the rest of the $10,000 to make sure that's all covered, as soon as we're happy with what they've done. They do have to come down and take down the old scoreboard yet. For some reason, they got tired and decided they didn't want to take it down that night and left it up there. So, I think they're coming back tomorrow after swim practice to remove the old one from the wall. And then, Brian Hensley and his crew's going to take out the plugs and make sure that all gets cleaned up, and then hardwire that one. They didn't tell us in their bid that they didn't hardwire, so they're going to hardwire and put some conduit into that, just some of our own people take care of that, so that cord that you see hanging will not be there. I also talked to Mr. Hensley this morning. If you notice, there above the word Spartans, there's a speaker. We think we can shorten the conduit just a tad and raise the speakers just a little bit to make sure that's above the word Spartans, so that that speaker will not be hanging there. But, the people who were gracious enough to donate, I want to thank them publicly. I will send them a letter. I will also send them a picture of what the scoreboard looks like. And then, we're going to make some type of banner signed that has their names up, to hang up by the wall. It came with a sponsor line, but there's so many, I didn't want to put a bunch of little just things up there. So, we'll make something nice to hang up beside it for their generation and donations to make. But, Georgia Green, Brooke and Brett Adams, Dead Telking Fund, or the Telking Fund from the Fayette County Foundation, you know, they had a boy that died, Andrew, I believe is his name, that died in a scuba accident years ago, and they have a fund set up at the Fayette County Foundation. So, we got a $2,500 grant from them. Brooke, Brett, and Georgia all donated $5,000 apiece. Cast, the Conner'sville Swim Team gave us $2,500. CMS gave us $500. FCN Bank gave us $500. And, of course, we're going to fund the rest of it through the CPF. And the swim team has done a great job of raising money, and then, what they, they and I will split what's in there to cover the difference, which will be about $5,000 for each of us to put in there. So, definitely, a much-needed improvement. The kids are excited. Darrell's definitely excited. I'm sure that Haley Cabbins, who runs the scoring system, I was going to light the whole scoreboard up for you, but until you have the computer set up to the scoreboard, it won't score the meet, so you can't get all the, all the scores and all the times of it. But, if you remember the old black one, there was no place on the board that actually showed the meet score as the meet progressed. This now, as you see on the bottom right-hand corner, has the homeboy scores and the guestboy scores and so forth. So, definitely, uh, definitely an upgrade to the swimming program, and I know the kids will be ecstatic. I know my little one's in there. I don't know that he likes swimming, but he'll at least get to experience some of that.
Paying no attention to you whatsoever.
I told him he couldn't smile, couldn't laugh, couldn't giggle, no matter what happens on that thing. And I promised him one piece of candy from Wendy's Bowl out there if he can behave. Who did the Conner'sville Spartan and the Spartan Heads? That company, Daktronic. So, I sent them a picture. The company did that? Well, it was kind of funny, because when I first put the bid out, I, I tried to really lean heavily on Brooke and Brett about maybe buying the whole thing. So, I had the whole picture made with their Fayette County Tool logo down.
Oh, wow.
Uh, you know, they've been generous with everything they've done with swimming for years. He never really responded, but between Darrell and I, we got him in, and he said he would be able to donate. But, I just sent them the picture of our Spartan Head, and they designed all the work for me. We went back and forth a couple of times on what we liked and what we didn't like, and he finally says, "How do you think about this one?" And I saw, and I was like, "Yeah, I think I like that one." So, we're excited to have it, so, and hopefully, we'll get a chance to use it Saturday, depending on the weather, and if South Dearborn and Oldenburg can make it up here. South Dearborn definitely says they're coming. I'm waiting on Oldenburg. Other than that, we, we're excited. So, a lot of improvements to happen.
I got to send a picture of this to Jeff Herdick, who ran the computers for so long, and the times the scoreboard wouldn't work, and everybody's like running, standing on ladders, you know, messing with cords, and...
It's an entire new system. There's new touchpads, new score system, new software. They had to upgrade their computer to be able to operate it, so we spent another $300 to upgrade the system that they use to, that'll talk back and forth to the computer. Obviously, the horn, the sound ought to be a little bit better, and I think when our, if you've ever been to our swim meets, you probably know Dick Four, Richard Four, guy from Rich, he's, he's by far the guy we use most to start swim meets. If you want to get your license to start swim meets, we could use you. But, Dick promised me that when he hit the lottery, that us in Richmond are getting new natatoriums with dive pool, and I told Dick that he's not getting much younger, so he better hit pretty quick. So, but, we're excited about it. We're anxious to be able to use it this coming Saturday, and we'll hopefully hold our breath. Stephen Kiefer, who helps with Cast, and then Haley and our manager think they all know how to run it. So, it has a little printout. When you hit the button, little paper tags come out with the time and the splits, and so, it does all kinds of things. It actually would hold twelve lane, the scoreboard would actually hold twelve lanes if we had a twelve-lane pool.
Jerry Hathaway would just be loving this. He used to sit in stands and write all those splits for every swimmer.
Yeah, him and Jerry Dickerson, they're, you know, they're always there trying to do things, so... But, we're excited. Can't, we can't get to put it in Houston this coming weekend, so hopefully, unfortunately, we didn't get up as quick as we wanted, but...
Brent, we're just, we're thrilled with all the things that are happening with the athletic department, just all the new upgrades.
With the support of all you guys, and, you know, hopefully, our kids deserve the best. As, as one superintendent, he wants his kids to drive Lexus, not just some car, so I want them to have it, because that's what they deserve. So, hopefully, that's where we keep going, and things have definitely improved in the last two years, for sure. So... Brent, congratulations on being appointed to the ICSS Board. It's very good for our community to have you on there. I'm, I'm excited. We had our first orientation meeting last week, and I'm telling you, it was an eye-opener. When I sat in there for the four hours, and unfortunately, the one guy from Charlestown was caught in the sixty-five accident when the chemicals bill and couldn't make it, but my eyes were just like, "Ooh." They asked me how I felt, and I said, "Well, I'm a little anxious, you know, and excited, but there's a little scary part about what's to come." But, after sitting through it, and how they treated us for the two days that we were there, it's just a fantastic experience, and I can't wait. So, I sat through our first hearing, but I was allowed to talk, so got to listen to the appeal process. It was kind of...
Just a little.
So, but, we're excited, and we thank you, everybody, for everything you do, and come out and, come out and watch us. There has been some schedule changes, so if you're not following us on Twitter. Today was spent, as Randy knows, I spent all day on the, on the phone trying to move ballgames for helping people, and East Central needed help moving games, for us to move a game, and trying to find official once you move a game, and so, it was a long couple of days with all the snow and the weather, but we'll get through it, so...
What time is, oh, 11:00 a.m. on Saturday?
11:00 a.m. I wanted to go 10, but South Dearborn likes that extra hour to get up here, just to be okay, so... Thank you for your time. I'll take the little guy out.
Thank you, Brent.
This is so cool.
Okay. We will now move on to action items, and we'll begin with the personnel report, recommendations for employment. Mr. Collins?
Thank you. We have two recommendations for employment. Our first is Joni Cohen, who will be our new speech-language pathologist. We are very excited to bring her on board as a master's degree-licensed speech-language pathologist who can take care of all the, the needs of her caseload, so very great find for us to, to bring her on board. We have two classified staff, Rhonda Day, custodian at CHS, and Becky Warford, nutrition bus assistant at Eastview. The second item is a memo I submitted. We are working on aligning all of our benefits and some of our areas in our appendix 3.25, and one of our longtime employees has a need to use some leave time to care for a family member, and we want to waive the use of paid benefit days as detailed in the memo, so we're asking for permission to waive the guidelines of appendix 3.25G, and then also note that that is something we are working on with updating, and I'll be working with the committee, the board policy committee, this spring and summer, to get some updates on some of those that need to be done for consistency. So, those are the items for approval.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the personnel report. I'll make that motion. Thank you, Lori. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And we'll move on to the approval of professional services agreement. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. President. In your packets, I provided a memo, and then the agreement for Michelle Cooper to remain the board attorney for Fayette County Schools for 2018. As you all know, we work closely with her, and I think Michelle's done a fabulous job. I think she's one of our best school attorneys in the state, and the terms of the agreement have not changed. She will still offer the board training and administrative training at no cost, and and her fees have remained the same from 2017. The dates are the only things that have changed on this agreement. So, I submit that to you for approval.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the professional services agreement.
I surrender.
Thank you, Ann. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, resolution to transfer South half of Lot Number One in Orange Township. Ms. Colm Tolle.
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobs. I've had the pleasure of working with Marion DelRipoll and trying to, and I mean that. Marion has just been wonderful. I've really enjoyed making a new friend with him. We received the survey back and then Marion and I have met a couple of times and talked about that, talked about what the township might want out there. And really, all they want to try and keep is this South half of Lot One, which has the basketball goal and a little court on it. They believe it helps them if they retain this for the community to use that area, but also would help them should they have the need to fight, if you will, a CAFO moving in that area. And so, it's our recommendation that we donate to them the part of that orange school property that they desire. Once this is approved, I will get Marion another copy of the resolution that mirrors ours to present to his board. He did have a signed resolution from them asking for us to donate that property to them. It's very similar to what we did with the Alquina property, only a smaller section. So, the next step, if approved, we'll figure out how to carve that off and then we'll move to getting appraisals for the remaining property so that we can move forward with offering it for sale.
And can I just ask on that? You've had some people interested in the other parts, right?
An adjacent landowner has expressed interest, but we cannot limit the scope necessarily to just them, so.
But yeah, but we've had some interest.
We'll get the appraisals and see where we go from there.
Sounds good. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion for the resolution to transfer the South half of Lot One in Orange Township. I'll make that motion. Thank you, Lori. A second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Warren. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The CHS interior door and lock replacement quote, Ms. Colm Tolle.
Thank you. As was shared with you earlier in the fall, we have been approved for a school safety grant. It is 50% paid through the grant, 50% is paid by the school corporation, so we do have a local match. The final quote for the project was more than the estimate, so I did file with the state an amendment request asking for the portion that was associated with the door project to be increased and the portion for the camera project to be reduced. That has been approved, so we're now seeking the board's approval to proceed with this project of the door and lock replacement. Many of the doors at the high school don't lock or don't have keys or they are not...
They have a key, you can find.
Yeah, okay, they have a key, yes. They will be a part of our lock system and key tree, if you will, so that hopefully, Mr. Judd will have one key that will allow him in everywhere he needs to be.
Okay, it's an actual key?
It is a key. It also brings us into compliance, ADA compliance, with the doorknobs that our students and staff will use to enter these rooms. So, we're looking forward to getting going with this project and greatly appreciate the fact that the state grant is helping us pick up half of the cost.
Jane, is that figure half of the cost? Is that the total cost, that $96,000?
The $96,000 is the total cost.
Okay, so we're about $47,000.
Correct. And so, when I knew what the final cost was, I asked Mr. Judd and Mr. West to get their camera quotes together for the balance of this project and we have already issued the purchase order to CEI for the cameras replacement for the $4,000 balance of the projects.
Wendy, anticipate this project starting then?
Well, I would, I would like maybe spring break to be done. I don't know. The doors may take some lead time, so.
Right. Okay.
It's exciting.
It'd be a project.
Yes.
I don't think Randy's ever been excited about doors as you are now.
Never in my life, no.
I haven't either.
But you have wanted this project for quite some time. And so...
Great addition. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion for the CHS interior door and lock replacement quote.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mark. May I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Warren. Any further discussion? All those, do we need to wait because? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, now's the time for persons wishing to make the board aware of suggestions, ideas, and or comments. May address the board at this time. Comments which involve personnel or students must be discussed in private. Hearing none, we will move on to report items. Superintendent Discussion Group Report. Okay, principals or directors reports. Director of Human Resources Report.
No. Talked to Mrs. Cirque, he's doing well.
Good.
Have him back sooner rather than later.
Good.
Good. Okay, Director of Finance Report.
I'll pass.
All right. Assistant Superintendent Report.
I'm also going to sign. Wow.
And the Superintendent's Report.
I'm always that. I have something to say. I'm coming over there, but I really, I really just want to share a couple of things. At first, completing my first year as superintendent, it's been an honor and I appreciated the support of this board. I think we have a very cohesive group that is focused on kids and I appreciate that as superintendent. We have a terrific administrative team I get to work with every day and they do so much behind the scenes that people don't know, our building leaders and then our teachers make it happen every day and our staff. And I want to commend our custodial maintenance staff for all this weather and out there before sunrise trying to get the buildings cleared and then the superintendent calls school and messes up their plans, but it's just, people don't always realize how much time is spent keeping our buildings safe and the dedication of this group. And then our bus drivers and our transportation folks. Just, it's not easy driving a bus out there. I've never done it, but I know something that I've been doing is having Katrina check in with some of our bus drivers who live out in the rural areas. And I do take their feedback to heart. I think that's important. So, we've had four snow days. Didn't want to have four snow days, but I think they were the right calls in keeping our kids safe. It's going to be a little tricky tomorrow because the roads are still slippery places and our county highway department asked that we may consider a two-hour delay just to give them a little more time in the morning. So, I'm hoping we're through this and we can get kids back in the building tomorrow, even if it's delayed, and get them in a routine again. I know everybody's ready for them.
Take the kids, you're ready.
They're ready.
I know their parents are because I've heard from several.
I think there's a greater appreciation for teachers after a few snow days.
That's all I have, so thank you.
All right, thank you. For the good of the cause, anybody in there? I'd like to share.
I would like to brag on the middle school athletic teams, the boys in particular. They were honored at the Spartan World the other night and I have the fun of watching them play every home game. And to a person, the seventh grade A and B teams have been a delight to watch. They have lost a total of three games with the two teams, which is quite amazing. Our B team is good enough to beat most A teams that we play and it's a great, great group of young men and they like each other and they have a good time. Their games are fun to watch. Coach Brown stands in this corner of the gym and kind of salivates with what's coming up. Our eighth grade teams have done very, very well also. Middle school coaches don't get paid a lot, guys, not much at all by comparison to the hours that they put in and the dedication of Brian and Chris and John and, two Chris's, Chris Ilcott and Chris Brum and John Reynolds, is really tremendous because Chris Ilcott is not a teacher. He's a volunteer coach. The other ones are, actually, John Reynolds is not either. And they spend an awful lot of time with these young people over the course of a season and the focus isn't about winning. That's nice. It's a nice byproduct, but the focus is about learning to play together and becoming better people. And if you can make that kind of impression on 13- and 14-year-olds, that's quite a, that's quite an accomplishment. So, I have a blast doing all their games. The girls' season has started. We have a girls' tournament on Saturday. Girls' red team, please come down. Scott's niece is playing and we're all speculating as to what kind of leg warmers that she will have on. Cheryl here is her own drummer. She's an excellent ball player and they're just fun, they're fun to watch and they really do appreciate the crowds. They know who's there and enjoy putting on the show, but the boys' teams just finished their, unfortunately, we had both of their last home games canceled because of the weather those last few days, but they're really a fun group. And next year, guys, go down and watch them play because they're, they're just, they're just fun and they're really good kids and their grades are good. Just a really nice group of kids to watch.
Thank you, Ann. Anybody else have anything to share? Okay, and I will seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Warren. A second? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, meaning adjourn.